I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Okay, trustee Bingham.
President.
Trustee Duncan. Trustee Brunden, here. Trustee Martinson.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
And trustee Saylor.
Over here. And Mr. Duncan has an excused absence tonight. So, I would ask everybody to rise from the Capitol engines and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last or previous forum meeting. Motion by trustee Bingham.
Second.
Second by trustee Martinson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 30th special board meeting. Motion by trustee Bingham, second by trustee Mitchell. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any public comments on any agenda items? Okay, thank you. The president's report, I have a couple of things, most of my comments on the budget I will save for the December 4th budget hearing. I would like to bring up tonight that I've been talking with Mr. Harrington, our interim administrator, about putting $4,000 in board expenses for next year so we can, I'm really pushing the electronic media, going with iPads, so we, I feel is going to help streamline stuff and updates will be more readily available. Of course, they're only as good as if you read what's sent here too, so we can talk more about that at the budget hearing and then, I forget what the other one was I wanted to bring up. Do you remember, Scott?
The rugs.
Oh, yes, the rugs. As you can see, we have a beautiful new floor down here and Craig Casson, who is the parks guy for the village, brought up about possibly getting rugs by the doors here, one in the kitchen, or two in the kitchen, and then one by the service door in the back. And I forget the exact price, he said $430 some dollars, so it would be under $450 and that would be itemized like the ones that the fire department are and police station gets them in the village, so I think it'll cut down because if we start getting the inclement weather, they're going to come in and start banging their feet, you know, and if we don't have something there to catch it, we're going to be having the paint peel away sooner than, hopefully, well. So that's just another thing I'd like to put out there. Mr. Casson did say he's going to be speaking with one of the Lions members, see if they wanted to contribute, I guess, to the cause, but for the price it is, I think the village could easily pick that up and preserve our floor a little bit more. Not to put you on the spot, though, what is this, probably three years unprotected by the doors? Probably. Okay. So that's something to think about also. And then I'm going to, my other thing I'd like to just briefly about our monthly committee and board meetings. We all saw the sheet from last month and all the meetings we had. I think it, I would like to see instead of having special meetings because an entity needed permission to do something, that some of the onus should be on them if it's not an emergency to, they know when all the committee meetings are, so when they want to bring something up, we're not, unless it's an emergency, we're no longer going to have all these special meetings. I know a lot of them were for the police, you know, and stuff like that, or trying to catch up on things that had to be done, but that's the way I'm thinking about it. But remember, if I refuse to have a special meeting, the board can still do it, you know, by voting on it, so.
We have special meetings every last month.
But anyway, so it's going to be a two-way street. In other words, we're not going to bend over for everybody that needs something approved, they can work with the chairman, get on their agenda the way it's supposed to work, and then have it brought to the board. So, and then, Mr. Harrington, I would like to turn it over to you, you have something more on it.
Yeah, we wanted to look at the meeting schedule, so I've got these, I'm going to take one and pass it out. And there was a couple of things in that, um, there's more. Couple of things we're trying to address. One is trying to get agendas settled so that we don't have to make last-minute changes, you know, this is the agenda for this meeting posted till yesterday and want to try to give more notice both to the public and all of you and to move business along. And so, what this shows, starting in January, is that the board meeting would stay on the second Tuesday, but basically FHR would move to the first Tuesday and Public Safety would move to the fourth Thursday. And so what that does is that puts FHR a week ahead of the board meeting, so bills and everything coming out of that meeting would go straight to the village board. And then CIRP and PIT stay where they were, and then Public Safety moves to that fourth Thursday instead of the, basically kind of the first Thursday, or Tuesday, right. And then, you know, the village board meeting would only be like two weeks after that. So, that was the thought, was to, again, kind of try to move things along, particularly the payables. And with FHR now on the Thursday before the Tuesday board meeting, that's just not a lot of time to prepare things and get them out to the board. We're, I'd like to kind of get packets out with Diane more like on Thursday or Friday before the board meeting, so you have all the information to look at over the weekend and on Monday before, and act on it on Tuesday. And so, for agendas, what we'd like to see is the Monday of the week prior to when the committee meeting is, that Diane and the administrator would work on a draft agenda, get that to the committee chair and to the village president to kind of weigh in on, and try to finalize that agenda by that Wednesday, along with all materials that would go with that agenda, so that they could then be sent out on Thursday or Friday, again, giving all the committee members before weekend to look at everything. And rather than kind of just bringing information to the meeting and kind of putting it down in front of you at that point. Certainly, there'll be exceptions kind of here and there, but I think that would kind of really streamline the process, get you all information and plenty of time to review it. And we can distribute all committee agendas to all members, that way you know what the other committees are up to. If you are really interested in something, you can go to the meeting and voice your opinion. Of course, only the committee will vote on it, but that way the board member will know what the other committees are up to and can go to those meetings if you'd like. So, that was the thought. One thing to note, though, is that the next Public Safety meeting is December 5th, so that's in a couple of weeks. And then it would drop to January 25th, so that's about 40 days before there would be another meeting. And so, if there's something really critical that you know of that's coming up, if we could get that on the agenda for the 5th, that would be ideal. If there's something that, for whatever reason, has to fall in between, let's kind of talk about that, maybe there, if need be, there could be a one-on-one special safety meeting in early January, but otherwise it would drop to the end of the month instead of beginning of the month. And then, let me stop there before I go on to where this plan commission thing falls in.
Are there any questions at this point for Mr. Harrington? About the meetings and stuff? Okay, Scott?
Just wanted to point out, on December 19th, there's kind of three meetings back-to-back-to-back. So, there's a plan commission meeting, we're going to adopt a new zoning map, I've heard a number of people kind of complained that the map hanging in the village hall is woefully out of date, and so Laura Lyne has been working with the county GIS guy to get that map up to date, and he's done research on the zoning changes that have been approved since then. And so, we're just going to adopt a new map. We have to do that via a public hearing in front of the plan commission, it's got to be noticed two consecutive weeks beforehand. So, they're going to meet on the 19th to adopt a new map, then PIT would meet to then make a recommendation on the map for the board to then act on it on January 9th. PIT got moved to the 19th, or did CIRP, I think CIRP got moved up, right?
PIT got moved.
Somebody was going to move on, was supposed to meet on the 26th. And obviously, that's not a great day, so those two committees got put on the same day so that we could all enjoy the holidays, basically. So that's why the 19th is a little crowded, but that's kind of what we have in mind for that.
Any questions about the map? Anything in that regard?
These new dates, like Tuesday, first Tuesday is the first Thursday, is that work for you as chair of FHR?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And then, Scott, it's true about doing public safety work for her, what does she guys?
Thursdays don't work for me.
Thursdays don't work for you? All right. So.
It's one day a week, it's my husband's work schedule in childcare issues.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll figure out something there. So.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Why don't they work, chief?
My husband's work schedule is childcare.
So, all four Thursdays are?
He had.
Is that something department-wise or military-wise, or?
No, it's just I don't have childcare on Thursdays because of Don Tar's Dom Days, and my husband has to stay late on those days.
Is it time-related?
If we can move it back, that would be helpful.
Later than the day? So, my thing is, as you know, is keeping the same day each month, same day.
Yeah, that's the only day that he has later work hours. So any other day that week or later in the night.
So, you can work, Chairman Mitchell, you guys?
I can, yeah.
Okay. Because I'd really like to keep it that day because it's really going to make things flow better, but as far as time, I mean, you guys can knock yourselves out when you like.
Or, again, to confuse it, maybe we'll settle this offline, but if PIT and Public Safety change, so Public Safety would be the last two, the fourth Tuesday and PIT would be the fourth Thursday?
Fine.
All right, well, we'll work at it offline and get back to you all.
Chief, would, either of those matter to you? I will use my prerogative as presider. We're not going to go back, so you guys sure that's going to work, moving to Tuesday with PIT moving to Thursday, fourth Thursday? Chief, you're okay with that? Okay, we're going to write it in stone, that's what we'll do then. Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Yep. And I'll send out a thing like I was talking on the agendas, but again, the idea would be to start the agenda planning process of Monday of the week prior to when the meeting is, and then by now Wednesday have that agenda formed up and then get the agenda and the accompanying materials out no later than that Friday, so that everybody has the weekend and whatever dates prior to the meeting and stuff. So, that's it.
Okay, let's get into the committee reports. Chairman Bingham, you're up, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
We met on October 17th. We had a presentation by Sarah Soluski, who is from a group that's looking at beautification in regard to the central greater Wisconsin Rapids area, and they were looking at the median on the Nepco Lake Bridge, whereas, not very unattractive according to them, it's basically a kind of blacktop slab right now, or blacktop, but we're doing quite well there, and they, he said, as an entrance to, one of the entrances to, and then they were right, she was right. It's one of these groups coming out of Wisconsin Rapids looking at getting things turned around. She did a really nice job, she had some pictures of proposed things and some things the way they currently are. Grand Rapids has got a little bit of that, Mr. President, if I remember correctly, Port Edwards does. One of the concerns, which was very legitimate, was that with the building going out on the west side, west side, south side of Nepco, kids use that median to come from the south side to the north side of the lake, and then they get up and go wherever, like kids do, and there is no bike lane on that bridge, so there's a safety consideration there. And so, I'm not sure what the resolution on that would be, something if the chief or fire chief or police chief at some future time have some input into that. Right now, she has no funding, and we didn't put anything in the budget for it, so she would be, probably be looking at some private funding, but we would have to agree to allow it to happen. And I guess the safety issue for me is a primary concern also. I'd like it to look nice, but I don't want kids riding on that road, people go pretty good through there. What's the speed limit there, chief, you know, coming across there?
Forty-five.
Forty-five? Yeah. I mean, that's, even if you're doing the speed limit, that's pretty good. And, so, you know, that's a consideration, but you did a nice job, they're looking to do some things in the community, and that's one of them, so that's something to consider. The Park Place Residential Development Street and Curb discussion, Scott has done an admirable job resolving that to the satisfaction of the developer and the village, and so, and again, either one of you gentlemen, correct me, the curb's been taken out, that was, we had in question, there's been a sub-layer laid there by the county for the winter, new curb will be laid at the developer's expense in the spring, and then we'll put the final layer on. Does that summarize it, gentlemen? Okay. Very happy, been dancing with that thing for quite a while, and appreciate Scott's efforts on that. Splash pad discussion, again, residents were in, Kathy was here, and was at that meeting, talked about maintenance costs and things, and again, Scott went out and got some information from three communities, and it probably, it's good, it's good information, it's a lot of information. Probably the two things that I was looking at primarily, one is the city of Jamesville, which is obviously bigger. How do you pronounce Bozamani?
Mazomani.
Mazomani. Sounds, yeah.
I bet.
Where is, I forget what the, what's the population of that?
Where is that? It's in western Dane County.
Okay. And then Milton, which is probably, you know, still bigger, but I think people are familiar with Milton. Those are the three that have responded so far. The two things probably that people are most interested in is how much it's going to cost once it's in, and they were kind of over the board. I'm going to, looking at what they put in here, I'm going to say $10,000 to $15,000 annually. I think we put $10,000 in the budget for the splash pad next year for maintenance or whatever, and the splash pad, if we start it today, it wouldn't even be up till August, but we want to start that, that line item in the budget. Usage was good at all three sites, nobody had any problems with that, really no problems, no employees typically. Yeah, I mean, from a standpoint, and they did it. The thing that interested me, the construction was well under $500,000. So, one of these is 15, 16, and 13, 13, 15, and 16, so now I'm a little more optimistic that the $500,000 would do its job. At one point, MSA, we were scratching to get everything in, and of course, we were looking at probably some additional things. If, Kathy, if we would go ripple, I know you had some interest in, and Marshall had, if we would go out here by the Y, I think the cost, my opinion would be the cost would be less, because you have some structures in the area. So, I'm a little more optimistic about cost on that thing. Our president has mentioned a cooperative effort with the Y, because the preschool, K school, or whatever they call it, will still be here. So, that's, I think it's pretty good feedback. I don't, you know, I don't have the definitive, but I don't think I'm going to get definitive. They're going to say, this is what our water bill is, this is what our annual maintenance cost is, if there is maintenance needed. If there is no maintenance, you pay for the water, and that's about it. I think in the future then, to wrap that discussion up for tonight, is to say, and I would talk to our president off, off the meeting time, offline here, about what our next step might be with that in terms of if we, if, Kathy, if you feel, and when you talk to Marshall, if you feel you want, you're looking for more input into the process, if you want the community, and I welcome that. I don't know if we want to put something in one of, when we send out our newsletter, asking for feedback, I don't know how, when's the next one come out?
In the spring.
Okay, that's a little later than I would hope. But if you have any ideas, you can call me, I'm open to that, all right? Thank you. And thanks, I would really appreciate that. Thanks, Scott, for getting this information, it's helpful, so.
Yeah, just, I've sent Scott two others.
Oh, okay.
So I will get that to your whole committee.
Okay.
And then I also ran some demographics, like how many kids actually live within like a 10-minute drive, and I'll send that to you.
Of the locations that's submitted? Okay, excellent, excellent, yeah. And that's, that's, you know, we have to look at, we shouldn't just look at, here, we got to look at Nkusa, Rapids, Rome, you know, I think they all serve a purpose, but it's like, who's going to draw, and what are we going to draw from? Good point, thank you. I'm just jumping around a little bit here. I'm just going to go down to what the director of Public Works, the county's been in, done a lot of work since the CIRP meeting, I even saw a couple residents at the hospital, and I said, "How's your road?" And they, I always ask them, "How's your road?" If they say good, then I'm happy. So Dell, it's good, they're happy. Happy residents make happy board members, make happy public work directors. So that's good. No, I was really pleased to see with what's happened here late in the year, and I'm learning myself and how that works as we get later in the year and get curbed and corners laid down and then streets come in and the county comes in. So very happy with that. We had some water issues with DMI, they've been resolved except for the sewer, Dell tells me, so I'm happy to hear that, Dell, so. So we're, we're in a positive place, now we're just waiting for snow, right?
No.
No, yeah, if you don't have snow, that would, that would be okay. Again, I'm just jumping around here, I think we did have one motion come out of there, we had two residents who were inquiring about their water bills due to a leak. Both, one of those was caught by the app that our water person carries with him, which was great, he was able to access the resident and actually turn the water off. And then the other one was just a newer resident, so their fees, we credited them for wastewater fees and we reduced their bills from, in about half, they were about 600, I'm just approximating down to about, for Kim Hansen, it was $33782, would be your final bill, down from about 6-something, and Tim Rogerman was at $359, his was up in the seven also. So we were able to take care of those residents, they were very pleased with the outcome, I was very pleased with the relationship or the response of the village employees to that, Jim Lizer was very helpful in that, and Kim, Kim, Kim and Diane gave me some numbers, we were able to do that. So, I would entertain a motion to credit Kim Hansen $33782 for wastewater fees and Tim Rogerman $35999 for wastewater fees.
There's been a motion by trustee Bingham, second by trustee Brunden, to approve the adjusted water bills for Ms. Kim Hansen and Mr. Tim Rogerman. Is there any discussion? Hearing no request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. And that concludes my report, the next meeting of the Streets Committee will be on November 21st at 5:00 PM in the municipal building. I asked for a motion to approve the minutes as presented from the CIRP committee. Motion by trustee Bingham to approve the minutes of the CIRP committee's meeting, second. Second by trustee Brunden. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Chairman Martinson, Planning, Property and Information Technology.
Thank you. We did meet on October 24th, and the first item of business was to review the Certified Survey Map submitted by Great Northern Timber Company, and we took care of that. And we do have a motion to approve the CSM submitted by the Great Northern Timber Company LLC for property located in the north, one half of the northwest, one quarter of Section 31 Township 22 North, range 6 East, per recommendation of the Plan Commission and the Planning, Property and Information Technology Committee.
So move. Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Bingham, to approve as read on the review of the Certified Survey Map, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We had a request for the village to address short-term property rentals, and we had some visitors that came in and carried on some conversation, and we were very grateful to have their input, it's something that we're going to have to address. Mr. Harrington said that the village currently doesn't have an ordinance regulating short-term rentals, however, the state budget was passed and signed into law to prohibit local municipalities to regulate the short-term rentals when owners are renting for seven days or more. Municipalities may prohibit short-term rentals six days or less, and any person who operates a short-term rental for more than 10 nights per year must obtain a license from the Department of Agricultural Trading, consumer protection, and a license from the local municipality is required as well. At this time, Scott Harrington and Laura Lyne here are going to gather information from other municipalities to create an ordinance for the village of Port Edwards to address the short-term rentals, and which will be brought back to the committee for future review.
Madam Chair, if I may, do you want to give a brief update as to where you're at on that?
Yeah, Nick and I had a conference call with Laura Lyne today, she's prepared some excellent documents, not only the ordinance change, but then all the new forms that would come with that, so we only had a couple of changes, she did a really nice job, so we'll have that ready for the committee.
Thank you, sir. What, oh, just a question. Either, so, short-term rental, give me, what would a circum- I'm. Less than seven days. I know, but, so you, I rent my house, I can rent my house out for less than seven days, to the water scares, to water scares, you mean, you mean to? But if I go beyond seven days, I need all this documentation. Well, you need, you need the appropriate permits even for less than seven days.
Well, okay, so currently, you can rent your house for one day or 365 days, the village ordinance does not address rent at all. But state law, so what the issue is, or like renting out a lake house for a weekend.
Okay.
And that's what the residents on the other side of the world were upset about. So what would be proposed would be to prohibit rentals of less than seven days, and then regulate via this new law of rentals longer than seven days.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
We also had a discussion regarding the plant and zoning of the DMI property located at 100 Wisconsin River Drive. Mr. Harrington explained and reviewed the plant map and zoning requirements for the DMI property to committee and Plan Commission. Would you like to follow up a little bit more on that?
I just really brought it forward as an informational item, as you'll recall, when you all approved the CSM for them to be able to sell the warehouse, we did an amendment to their development agreement that required them to come we did an amendment to their development agreement that required them to come back in shortly thereafter with a full plat for the whole property as well as a rezoning to planned unit development. That's what was originally agreed to. And this put a definitive timeframe, so I had follow-up discussion with them. I expect to get their application by the middle of next month and would probably schedule that then for a public hearing at the January Plan Commission in Pitt meetings.
Thank you. We also had correspondence that was received from the students from the Port Edwards High School. They had contacted the committee members to inquire about moving the John Edwards statue from the current DMI location to the high school. There was some conversation on that, but that has still not been completely resolved. Agenda items for the next meeting, Mr. Zer, our President Zerfle recommended that we invite the Plan Commission to the future PPIT meeting as needed, which has been done. And I'd like to make a motion to rezone the above referenced property, which was the Great Northern Timber Company property from A2 to R3L for recommendation of the Plan Commission and the Planning, Property and Information Technology Committee.
Mr.? Hold on, hold on. Motion by Chairman Martinson to, if I can find it here again, to rezone the property from A2 to R3L from the Plan Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Mitchell, the chair recognizes the administrator.
I did some research on this and it appears this was already addressed in 2013. And then again, it's another issue where it doesn't show up on our map and there was confusion. So I don't think action on this item is required because it's already done.
Okay, then the chair would recognize that the motion is now lawful. Thanks.
I'd like to make motion to approve the minutes of the Planning, Property and Information Technology Committee.
Motion by Chairman Martinson to approve committee minutes, second, second by trustee Grundon. Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Before we move into the public safety one, Mr. Harrington, you and I talked about the approval of committee minutes, committee minutes, which is a long history, I guess, at board meetings and that we are one of the very, 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 very few that do that. In other words, committees approve their own minutes at their next meeting. It's kind of like, most of us weren't there, so to speak, so that's the standard way to do it, but Scott will explain more about it later. Chairman Mitchell. How does that feel to be under the bus at meetings, Scott?
Why am I here?
Okay. Public Safety Meeting will come meeting on November 7. And at that meeting, under the Fire Department, we briefly discussed physicals and this has been on the agenda or coming onto the agenda for the last several months and it is being referred to the Finance and Human Resources Committee because the physical statement that, or the physical eight and a half by 11 sheet is very out of date and needs to be updated and/or done away with, so that will, and FHR has had plenty to do, so we are going to take that up. Patrick. It will be handled eventually. We briefly, Patrick also reported on buying a truck for the Fire Department. He also talked about the fact that nine firefighters are going to Marshfield. I've forgotten what the date is, I think it's in December.
That was the last Saturday.
Oh, it was last Saturday, sorry, thank you. For firefighter two certification training. And briefly made sure that both the present chief and the new chief had copies of the new fire protection agreements to when they were happy to know all the money is still sitting, so no problems there. Okay, moving on to the Police Department. Spent a fair amount of time on the 2018 budget with detailed explanations of line items and the recommendations that Chief Iverson was making to the committee. It was recommended to Finance and Human Resources that there be a 2% increase in the crossing guard pay, which raised their pay from $25 to $25.50 a day. There was also a change in the amount in the community programs budget line from $5,000 down to $2,500. We had discussion on upcoming training in December that is taking place in Wisconsin We discussed Chief Iverson's National Guard schedule for 2018. We also looked at her drill schedule for 2018. I'm sorry, did I say 2018 twice? 2017 for the first one and then 2018. The timesheets were not available for our discussion, this was another topic, so we tabled that until the next meeting and we'll be looking at timesheets that are used both for the team and the officers. Let's see, we also discussed remodeling the lobby of the Police Department and had a motion there too. So, okay, I think that pretty well covers what we discussed. So going back to motions, I move that Chief Iverson be allowed to purchase a Panasonic Toughbook CF-33 at, per discretion, but at a cost not to exceed $3,500.
Chairman Mitchell has made the motion to allow the chief to purchase the Panasonic Toughbook as described, at the cost not to exceed $3,500, is there a second? Second by trustee Grundon. Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, now moving on to the Humane Society contracts. There was, or I move anyway, that we amend the agenda, it was item number 18 on our agenda that evening. It said human society contract, so.
Madam Chairman, we do not have to approve that, that's totally within your committee, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. We did do it though.
I didn't pick up on the mistake, so I was confused.
Okay, we do need a motion though to approve the Humane Society contract.
So move. So move. Motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by trustee Bingham, to approve the 2018 contract with the Humane Society. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and I move for the acceptance of the meetings, of the meeting dated November 7, 2017.
Motion by Chairman Mitchell to approve the minutes of her meeting. Second. Second by trustee Grundon. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we go to Chairman Martinson, the FHR committee.
Thank you. The FHR committee met on October 16th and we went into closed session to meet with employees individually to discuss employee performance and compensation. And we came out of the closed session and we worked on the budget development work session for a long time. With that being said, I would like to, I would like to make a motion to approve payment of the bills.
Chairman Martinson made the motion to approve the payment of the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Mitchell. Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. That was a slip, I didn't mean it more.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month.
Motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month by Chairman Martinson, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Grundon. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion to increase the special assessment search fee from $25 to $35 per parcel. Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Martinson and second by trustee Grundon to increase the special assessment search fee from $25 to $35 per parcel. Discussion?
What is that?
That's what I was going to hope somebody would ask.
The special assessment fee is, I'm not really sure exactly how to explain that. Can you help me out?
It's for, oh, I'm sorry.
Usually title companies request it when there's closing on a house and check to see if we have any special assessments out there to be paid.
So that money comes into the court?
Mm-hmm. It was brought to our attention.
So it's on sale of property?
It was brought to our attention that we really are a little bit behind and we feel that, yeah, we feel that we should move that up to $35 instead of the 25.
And, hearing no request, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Chief Iverson's attendance at a five-day CIT training in December. Second.
Motion by trustee, or Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Grundon, approve the chief's attendance at the five-day CIT training in December. Any discussion?
CIT means?
Crisis Intervention Techniques.
Without objection, I will go off table and ask the chief to give a brief description of the training, please.
The training gives us tools to deal with mentally ill individuals, to hopefully reduce the physical force aspect that generally comes with having to deal with those individuals.
Then I'm going to take this opportunity, Andrew, this is Officer Andrew Mark, for those of you who have not been to that yet. So do you know most people are on the table?
Most of them.
Have you met Mr. Harrington?
I have not yet.
Okay. Very good. At ease. Thank you, chief. So where are we, discussion going off table? We're kind of old, right? Did we vote on this yet?
No, ma'am.
We haven't, thank you, ma'am. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to send chief to the CIT training signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And I would also like to make a motion to hire Josiah Mertz and Alex Vinton as part-time police officers at a starting rate of $15 per hour.
Motion by Chairman Martinson, is that a second? Second by trustee Mitchell, to hire Josiah Mertz and Alex Vinton as part-time police officers at a starting rate of $15 per hour. Is there discussion?
Does that need to state pending background and psych status?
Without objection, I'll go off table. How far are you, chief?
I was started, yeah.
Okay, would you explain the process, please?
There'd be psychological evaluation, they'd receive a conditional offer that employment would ensue so long as they pass psychological eval, drug testing, medical evaluation and a background investigation.
My question, does the motion need to state that?
No, that's presumed. That's standard operating procedure, what the state requires.
So I'm only asking because I think on Andrews it said pending, so.
I don't remember the exact wording. Either way, it's got to happen.
Do you have a word regarding pending?
Like pending background check?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll refer to a counselor, but I'm sure he'd agree that it's assumed or presumed.
Are we assuming that Andrews is all good? Just kidding.
Are you satisfied, trustee Grundon?
Satisfied.
Thank you. Okay, did we vote on this?
No.
We did. Okay, I'm confused again. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, do we need the motion ready again? I don't think so. In hiring of these two individuals, part-time police officers, pending the appropriate checks and whatnot, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee meeting, which was held on October 16th. Thank you.
Chairman Martinson made a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting she described, second. Second by trustee Mitchell. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Airport Commission.
Yeah, we have a couple more FHR meetings.
Back that up, we're not on the Airport Commission. Keep them playing on the air, in tarmac and, sorry about that. How many, do you have two more sheets?
I do.
Okay, when we get to approving, if there's not objection, I'd like to pass approval of that one, one vote, which we're allowing to. So if you want to just read both?
Sure, I will do that. We met on October 19th and there was a motion to go into closed session to meet with.
I may ask you a question, somebody else.
Yeah, we did, right? And one on November 9th. No, we did not. We do have to read that separately now, right? Okay, so, did November 9th?
We have the 16th.
The 16th.
The 19th.
The 19th.
Was that ready?
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
We went into closed session on October 19th to meet with employees individually to discuss employee performance and compensation. And we came out of closed session and we worked on budget development work session and then we had a motion to go back into closed session for budget development work session pertaining to employee performance and compensation. And then we came out of closed session and there were no motions made from that meeting. And we met on November 9th and we had a discussion and recommendation of the village administrator job description and recruitment process. And we had a lengthy conversation and we had finalized the posting of the job responsibilities and qualifications for the administrative position with review pending from Mr. Harrington. Our target date for the new administrator applications would be that we post a job on November 17th and applications would be due by January 12th of 2018. And then the target set date for the new administrator to begin employment would hopefully be April of 2018. We also reviewed the monthly bills, journal entries for the previous month and financial reports and we had increased the assessment fee, which we already discussed. And reviewed time card form used by DPW employees and cashier. And we reviewed the Police Department proposed budget expenses. And we modeled work with the Medical Arts Building before the end of 2017.
Can we approve the 9th already, right?
Yes, we have. So I then would like to.
Just the 19th?
Yes. Prove minutes from the 19th.
Chairman Martinson made motion to approve FHR committee minutes from October 19th, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Bingham. Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now the Airport.
Okay, the Airport Committee met on October 5th and business discussed at that meeting was Phase 1 of the tree removal on the Bullseye Country Club property had been completed. was Phase One of the tree removal on the Bullseye Country Club property had been completed. Phase Two was to begin in November and is anticipated to be completed in early December. And that's clearing trees and stumps. The Commissioner, excuse me, the commission hangar repairs are all completed with a new hydraulic door and a rear overhead door. And the 2018 budget request had been reviewed and broke. We had budgeted $10,000 each for the 2018 airport support. Wages were increased by an amount expected to cover seasonal health worker during the busy months of 2018. And terminal internet access computer, Grand Rapids is considering giving the airport a computer. The cost of commission would be negligible and the cost associated with clearing the hard drive of the system as well. They were considering terminal improvements, which will be discussed and decided upon at a later date. There was a November 2nd meeting, which, again, they talked about the tree removal contract, which has been fulfilled by KNS Tree Service east of the airport. Phase Two had been completed as well. Phase Three is scheduled to begin in early November and estimated to end at December 1st. I believe they took two phases and turned it into three, is what happened. They weren't able to complete everything, which is two phase, in a two-phase. And a crack filling on runway 02/20 will take place this upcoming spring. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee meetings for the airport from October 5th and November 2nd.
Motion made by Chairman Martinson, approve the minutes of the October 5, November 2 Airport Commission meeting, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Grunden. Discussion. Hearing no request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Do we have... First of all, do we have anything for Chief Arm or Chief Iverson? Otherwise, I'm gonna cut them free. Thank you for coming. Unfinished business or any previous meeting? New business under A is discussion of administrator job duties and recruitment. Chairman Martinson, shall we pass the torch to Administrator Harrington?
Mr. President, I did send out on Friday the revised description based on input from the committee and a little tailoring I did around the edges for it. Also, kind of a start of a suggested ad posting. So as I mentioned in the email, I think it's really important that this entire body, to the extent possible, try to be of one mind about the type of person that you're looking for and the qualifications and what really matters so that they can be fairly and consistently evaluated. The process is the President has laid out previously is to, and that Chairman Martinson went over with her report, is to put out an ad really as soon as possible with applications due in early January. The Finance and Human Resources Committee then would review those from that select, whatever number they thought was appropriate for interviews, and then hopefully to bring the three top candidates to the full board. And so this would be the opportunity to make sure that FHR is aware of what the board wants to see in this person so that they can have that as criteria as they're evaluating these people, so that the three who come forward match that your wishes as closely as possible. I also promised to get some salary information that I have, but before we get into that, I'll kind of stop here and just see what sort of response you all have on...
Without objection, I'm gonna suspend the rules. Feel free to ask questions.
Well, Mr. Grunden? Hi. Free-wheeling right now. After I reviewed it over when Scott stood out and as the committee discussed it, I think it's headed in the right, I believe it is heading in the right direction. I'm looking at it from a public relations, we're looking for public relations, public works, and public administration, those three components in my mind. And I really feel that that ad, well, ad and documents that have been distributed capture that. So those will be, when we come to interview time, in my mind, those are three of the areas that I'll be looking at closely with the candidates.
I like the way you spiced up the appearance of Port Edwards.
He sold Port Everest.
He did sell it, and that was a really good thing, both in the job description and in the description of Port Edwards itself. So I appreciate that. Made it sound good.
It is good.
It is good.
There was, and I agree with you, there was a resident who emailed the board concerned about recent history. If you Google Port Edwards, you get a lot of negative articles from the Tribune, unfortunately. So if you're unfamiliar with the transition that has occurred and what's happening going forward, I really don't know how to address that, Scott. I've never been in that position of trying to, you know, pump up, pump up the area. You know, if a person applied at a college, you know, pretty much you get what you see.
I guess I thought you kind of did that with those...
Yeah, and that's great.
Made it.
Yeah. And I don't know if we'd go any further than that, if hopefully a candidate would ask those questions in an interview if there was a concern.
I, um, yeah, and so one of the things I added in the ad was that it's a new board, you know, because people who are professional administrators, that's one of the things they're gonna look for. And so if they see that this is a new board and all that's...
History.
You know, that you can, and I really wanted to emphasize the quality of the staff. I think that's also really important, that there's a very good staff here to work with.
Yeah.
But I do, I agree, because I Googled the village and, you know, some of those things from a year or so ago, or the first ones to pop up. So I had already been kind of pushing DMI and the new owner of the warehouse, who I have yet to talk to, to issue some kind of a joint thing and to make a little bit of hoopla out of it. I will continue to do that, and I'm hoping that can happen here in the next couple of weeks. And if we can put out a press release, maybe get some coverage in the paper, so that when somebody does Google it, that would be the first thing that would pop up. But to the extent that you can think of anything else that, you know, we can make some pay with here in the next few weeks, where we can get some positive coverage for whatever it is, then that would be great too. So I don't know at the moment what that might be, but if you all are aware of any events coming up, or if we...
Tree lighting, certainly.
Yeah, right. Any kind of milestone, you know, obviously we're gonna adopt the budget. I don't know what kind of coverage paper does or doesn't give, you know, on that, but anything that would be, you know, something positive would be helpful.
I was just, and maybe you did, no, I'm drawing a blank because, and maybe you said it in there, but we're right in the middle of a world-class golf course and other amenities, hunting, fishing, a lot of positives in central Wisconsin. And, you know, and I don't know, I believe that and I feel that. I think if people do the research like they should on applying for a job, they'll find that. But, yeah, I can't think of anything else.
Our school district just came out with something where, does this ring a bell with anybody else, where...
Yes.
Our rating.
Right, I included that. Because I actually went on the school district's website to find something like that, and I was like, oh, this is great. So, yeah, the school, the high school is in the top 15% in the state of Wisconsin, the top 12% internationally, according to what US News and World Report.
Right, right.
So I did add that in here, because I think that's a huge plus.
Is it possible to put comments on like the website, both municipal one and whatever that other one is called, progressive business site or whatever? What's, I don't know what the name of that, is it not up anymore? I haven't looked at it. Okay.
We have nothing to do with the other one.
The other one, it's now? Well, I'm just asking, just in case.
If I could get problems trying to tell people that's not the official village website, didn't we?
Right. Well, I was thinking of, might be a means of, like Leo was asking to make, have the public make positive comments of people to do that.
Port Business Council run that?
No.
The other website?
It was the Port Business Council, but, yeah. They, I don't know if they're gonna create a new one or what direction they're heading with that.
Maybe it doesn't exist.
It is, it's still up, but it just says that it doesn't, that website's not being updated anymore.
Obviously, I haven't looked recently.
I feel that we did a very good job with Scott's help in explaining exactly what type of administrator we're looking to get into our community. Somebody who is very open-minded and can communicate well with not only the employees but the residents. And I feel that this individual, whatever experience they bring into our community, will certainly help us move forward in a positive direction. And I thank Scott Harrington for taking our preliminary notes and turning them into what I think is a very, very good job posting. And I think that we're gonna have some good positive results and, again, move forward for, moving forward for Port Edwards. Thank you, Scott.
Welcome. Any other discussion? Hearing no request. We'll reinstate the rules and move to Madam Clark.
Mr. President, there was a matter of the salary.
Salary.
I didn't say that here.
Um, Scott, as you know, the President has asked Richard Downey, who's the administrator for Crowan Weller, to assist with the process. He's a member of the Wisconsin City and County Management Association. They do an annual salary survey, so I am handing out copies of that. There's a lot of data here and I don't intend to go through it tonight. And the reality is that, you know, this board can decide to pay whoever you hire, whatever you want. So the idea would be to try to understand the universe in which we're kind of living in and what that's generally gonna be. But we're not here tonight to pick a number. It's more to have some level of agreement or kind of range. We're probably living in, understanding that, you know, based on the candidate and their experience, you can then decide at that point exactly what that would be. So this is actually part of a much larger survey that I can send out. There's another four pages that go on and talk about how much do they pay in health insurance, and do you pay for them to go to conferences, and all that kind of stuff. So I didn't wanna include all of it.
Same, right?
Yeah, they're all the same. They're all the same. So I only included the first page, which kind of gets at the heart of the matter, like what's the salary? And I sorted this by population. So it starts from the lowest population to the highest population, because that's pretty typical, that the administrator's salary is somewhat a function of how big the community is. So on this first page, and again, this is sort of a voluntary response to not every community's on here, because they chose not to submit this survey to the organization. But it's a pretty good cross-section. And so it starts with Newburgh at a population of 1,200, and then the town of Clay with 4,000, and then it goes on from there. So I gave you the whole thing just so you can see, you know, as communities get bigger, how much these people make. But, you know, what you're seeing here, even for these, you know, communities of, you know, less than 3,000, it's really, the sweet spot is probably somewhere around, you know, 70 to 80. Again, that doesn't mean that you have to pay somebody that much, but as far as what other communities, comparable communities are paying, at least those who submitted the survey, that's kind of where it is. In talking with Richard, who's, you know, closer to this profession at this point than I am, I, you know, really have been engaged with village administrators at this level for quite a while, you know, he felt too that we're, you know, looking probably somewhere at least, you know, 65 to 75 would not be unusual, maybe higher if you, you know, found somebody with a lot of experience. So again, the point tonight isn't to decide on what is it gonna be, more to kind of share the information. I'll email you the full-on survey so you can look at all the benefits and everything else. But by and large, they were pretty similar, and we're all a state retirement plan and that type of thing. A little bit of compensation, you know, that's all pretty standard too, and a vehicle which you already provide. So that's what I know.
I think it's a very good reference sheet for, at first, the FHR committee and their interviews, but especially for the whole board when they get the three finalists. And I just think this way of, that we're going about it, I still firmly believe it's gonna be a can't lose situation type thing, because there're gonna be all candidates that make it to the board, then it's gonna be pretty much, one doesn't have as much experience here as in this, but, you know, they're gonna have different attributes and they're gonna be able to bring it to the table. So thank you for that, Scott.
Okay, Madam Clark, are you sorry?
I think that I wanted to add, we originally had discussed that we wouldn't necessarily be looking for an individual who was an engineer at this time, but obviously if an individual applies for the job and we feel that that person is our, the best candidate, I think the wages will certainly have to be, reflect that.
Well, and then the wages reflecting what we may have to budget if we don't have an engineer and have to contract out.
Absolutely.
Well, no, let us regroup through the process.
And I think we put $20,000 in, which is, I was probably too much after talking with some engineers and just knowing that at least next year, we don't have a lot of things that are gonna require a lot of engineering assistance. So that, you know, could be as little as $5,000. Where it would really be needed is that, you know, if we're gonna like completely redo the street like we did with Edwards Avenue, but, you know, we contracted that out anyhow. So there may be some things that they run into in the field, you know, water gets a little dicey because it's certified by the state, and, you know, there may be some things where they have to have somebody with a seal, give them an okay. But, yeah, that's, as you can see from the description, you know, the job description was administrator/ public works director. And the committee took that second title off this job and really dramatically reduced those specific responsibilities, especially because we have such an experience, public works superintendent. So the administrator would still be, you know, working the bid process and managing the contracts and that kind of thing, but the knowledge in the field isn't required to the extent that it was, you know, previously. So it really is more of a, I'd call it a generalist administrator, but certainly somebody who has municipal background that's dealt with public works and police and fire and municipal services would be helpful.
A lot of MBAs and MPAs on that sheet and for what they're making, we're gonna, I'm excited. I really am.
And, yeah, I'll disclose on that, too. I think you, I think it's a really attractive job to somebody with that kind of a background, because even though you're small, you are full service. And so for a community of this size, you know, you have, you have your own water system. You're not buying water from the town next to you, which is pretty common. You have your own sewer plant. You have your own police department. You have your own fire department. So you kind of offer most of the services of a bigger community, they're just smaller. But for somebody who's, you know, in career track for, you know, with a master's of public administration or, you know, a public administration background, it's a great place to get exposure to all of those things if they're looking to then move on to a bigger city that is likely to have all those things. So it's not just the title of administrator, but because you are full service, I think that's a real plus in terms of attracting really qualified candidates who are gonna be looking for, you know, that experience and frankly, that resume. And, you know, the average administrator hangs around for maybe these days, you know, four to five years. So we can get somebody really qualified to... four to five years, so if we can get somebody really qualified to last that long, it'll be a plus for them and for you.
Okay, we will move on to the court treasurers report. Sorry for making you wait.
I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the assessor contract for 2018, 19, and 20 from Beaumar Appraisal.
Looking for a motion to approve the assessor contract for 2018, 19, and 2020 by trustee Grundon, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Martenson. Any discussion on this matter? This is who we've been with for quite a while, and they do a very good job, very helpful. Okay, no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion for the garbage collection fee to be $110 for 2018.
Looking for a motion for garbage collection fee, under $10 for 2018.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Mitchell, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Grundon. Discussion. I was hoping you'd raise your hand on that one, because you were going to look into something along that way.
I did look into it, yeah, they haven't been able to contact you. Just a couple of questions or comments, just, and not in opposition to this, and I've asked Diane this before, and I can't remember the answer, so you're going to have to help me. Does 110 cover our expenditure to advanced disposal, or is the revenue, we're okay with that? Okay. My next question is, and I was going, and I still will, and soon as, when the new administrator comes on, hopefully there's some, might be one of his first things is to work, he or she to work with garbage, but, because that contract has lapsed, they're basically...
Could you please reword that?
I'll be more ways than one. So, I'm guessing, way things go, that, that, that contract will probably increase there. Now, we're probably, we don't have to, because it's service, we don't have to go out for bids on that, but there's two other, at least two other providers, so that's something... I guess my question is, we're not going to get in a bind, the earliest we would go to a new contract is probably this summer, right? I mean, if it happened all real quick and nice and neat, and that's probably ambitious, because it would have to go through the committee and go to the board and be negotiated and find out who we want to do it. So, just want to make sure $110 covers this.
What was the fee last year?
$110.
Yeah, it stayed the same, which is, I think, it's been pretty much that for, well, because we haven't had a contract renewal for at least three years. Okay, so as long as we're good for, my, that's a long question. We're good for 2018 even if we do negotiate a new contract properly.
Okay, all right, thank you. Did it, Jim?
So, I could string it out any longer, Mr. President.
We should let the record reflect that, when he mentioned about garbage, he wasn't talking about the sub-board members. Okay, we had the, we had the motion, and we had the second. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to authorize a public hearing for the 2018 Village budget as presented at the meeting. A public hearing will be held on December 4th, 2017 at 7:00 PM.
I'd like to have a motion to authorize a public hearing for the 2018 Village budget. Moved by trustee Bingham, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Grundon. Discussion.
Did we have before 7 o'clock years past?
The what?
Wasn't that like half an hour earlier?
About 7:00.
And it just started when I read the little stuff.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and finally, I'd like to ask for a motion to move the December board meeting to December 4th, 2017 for taxing purposes.
Motion by trustee Mitchell.
Second.
Second by trustee Grundon, to move the December board meeting to December 4th for taxing purposes. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I really don't have communication, but I want to commend the FHR committee. I think you guys did a good job on the, putting the budget together, is a new way we did it this year, and the board, when we met to review it, had very, very few changes, and in particular, mostly, I would like to thank our clerk, who even though we make little tweaks here and there and outright changes sometimes, she's the one that's got to go back and crunch the numbers and get the report off to us, so good job, Diane, I appreciate it. Okay, committee calendar, I'm not going to read, does everybody have a copy?
Mr. Trump, yes. Are you going to take that draft, and is that going to become our committee, that meeting calendar you showed earlier, send that up to us?
Yes, yeah, Diane will get it.
Or whomever.
Yeah, yes.
Is that the source of our meeting?
And I put out two months, only because one year going into the other.
Well, and because the FHR is going to have additional meetings.
They have one on the 12th.
I'm just thinking about, I guess we don't have to do anything until the closing date on January 12th.
Right, yeah, I mean, after the 12th, you would have one, but, yeah, we take that date as special needs.
Right, right.
This would be the kind of standing committee meeting for regular business, special meeting for reviewing the applications that come in for the administrator.
Oh, there, yeah.
Correct, correct. So, that would be, right, that would be somewhere in early January.
One is just going to be sent out now.
Well, it sounds like you're all good with it, so I will work with you.
I do want to mention that the hiring of another, or interviewing for another police, part-time police officer is going to be taking place, so we'll have to fit that in somewhere.
I would almost prefer, sorry for interrupting, she, they have two to bring on board, and I don't think it's, I think this should go first, and then, you know, she's got two of the three, well, she has three of the four actually right now, so I don't think it's going to hurt to just delay that till after we get this first round of...
You said that she has put out the notice already, hasn't she?
It doesn't matter.
Oh, okay. We'll just hold on to them until...
We were going to hold off and with the interviews until after the first of the year anyway.
Right, and I just think that the, the most important, not a greedy, police officer, because I was one for a while, but I really want to see this administrator thing move forward first. And it takes a good six weeks to get the part-time restraint and on.
Yes, and I mentioned that the FHR, you know, we're going to, our water person supervisor, whatever, leaving in May, and again, I think that's a process, replacing that is something that we should start soon after the first of the year, because it'd be great to have somebody on board and, well, at least a little bit of overlap with Jim before it goes, so...
Dell and I talked about that some time ago, and I think we left that conversation pretty much really kicking that in gear come January. It's a good point to make, thank you for making it, because both, my humble opinion, both those jobs are a little bit more pressing right now to get going than the part-time police officer. Anything else? Committee, yes.
Well, I, if the committee could do it, though, I want, I'm a big, I want coverage in the community, so I don't want the lack of that other part-time person to be a reason we're not getting coverage in Village.
But the two that you just hired won't be on the road by themselves for probably two months.
That's true, but, okay, I just want to make sure we get the coverage as soon as we can.
Yeah, I just, I just think our main priority right now is administrator, somebody on the Department of Public Works crew, and then the part-time, because by the time she gets some training, they're on their own, it'll be good to go. But if you guys want to go through all of it at once, but I'm just going to remind you again, you might have one special meeting that's very long, instead of coming back repeatedly, because we spend, well, a special board meeting, that's seven times 35, what would that be? Probably 175, over $200 by the time we're done, and I, I just don't, that money really piles up.
Well, I agree.
You know, and I think with a little creative work scheduling, things can be covered with the people you have. That's where I'm on that matter. So, anyway, I'll get off the soapbox. Anything else?
The President did offer to buy a deal once in a while, which we haven't seen yet, some of the vulnerability. Just remind the President. But seriously, seriously, I don't think we've, you know, just for the public's knowledge, the budget meeting, we needed to have those meetings to get that budget done, and I don't think we ever did any special meetings, and when you're hiring people, you want to, you want to get it done in a timely fashion, so with all due respect, pieces would be appreciated.
We, I think in recent history, we have a good lesson, so that's why I'm, I'm more the tortoise here instead of the hare in this situation, so, but you guys can hope to do what you want to do. Anything else?
Eric, give an updating copy of the document, email to us, so we can look over it one more time before we answer.
Sure.
That way...
And we'll be prepared.
If we have questions, we can...
This week?
We'll be...
Okay. Good, good talk.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By trustee Bingham, second.
Second.
We adjourn, thank you.